Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular monthly meeting of the Cape Taro Board of Education. It is Monday, July 22nd, and the time is 6:08. Let the record show that all board members are present except for Mr. Cook and Mr. Karens. And please rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before us, we have an agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Fegley and Ms. Flinchy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion does carry. We don't have any recognition tonight. We don't have an audience tonight. So we do not have any information, proposals, or comments from the audience. I'm assuming no one signed up. Mr. Payne? All right, thank you. As a reminder, in case there are those listening, requests to place an item on the agenda or to address the board should be submitted in writing at least five days in advance of the regular monthly board meeting. Please submit requests to the Board Secretary, which is Mr. Payne, at the Central Administrative Office. Constituents who request to address the board are allotted three minutes to speak. For more information regarding public participation in board meetings, please see board policies on the district's website. All right, up first, we have informational reports and the Board President's Report. First and foremost, wanted to congratulate our very own Dr. Missy Fegley for receiving MSBA's Advanced and Master Certification at the Summer Summit, which is where you were at the last board meeting. Saw that and might have seen a great article in the newspaper, so just wanted to wish you congratulations on that. And Mr. Cook and Mr. Karens aren't here, so I'll give some kudos to the Booster Club Golf Tournament. I know Mr. Cook's the president of the Booster Club this year. Several of us were there. I participated in the morning session. I think they had 51 total teams between the morning and afternoon. I mean, just an amazing event. So also want to shout out Amy and Clayton Camp, who I know helped run it for the first year, did a phenomenal job. So, great event. That's all I got. And up next, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Well, we're hot and heavy trying to get everything ready for back-to-school preparation. We're in that mode. Our maintenance and custodians have been working on getting our buildings ready for the first day. We appreciate all their hard work as we all feel the excitement building for our new school year. So really excited about our kids running the halls. We are taking donations through our foundation to purchase school supplies for students. Each year, we work to provide school supplies for families in need, and we're very proud to continue doing so. If you know of someone wanting to make a donation, please refer them to the foundation's website or ask them to reach out to Ms. McDonald. Lastly, I wanted to brag on Teresa Taylor. She's a business teacher at Central High School with the DESI Southeast Missouri Teacher of the Year. She's nominated as the Southeast DESI Missouri Teacher of the Year. J.C., he's not here tonight, but wrote a great article in the newspaper about her, and we will have Ms. Taylor here to celebrate here in the next month or two, only once that school gets started.
That's great. All right, thank you, thank you. Up next, we have our CSIP/program evaluations, and tonight we are discussing Elevate One, culture, climate, and retention of staff. And then it's Dr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. So tonight's program evaluation, as he already stated, CSIP Elevate One, that's one specific goal that falls under that pillar within our entire program plan that we've drawn out over the next five years. Specifically, this goal, create and sustain a positive culture and practices to recruit, retain, and reward highly qualified personnel. As it states on the report, this affects all students, all families across the district. I've done a total district personnel cost because that's the most direct cost tied to staffing across the district. It's broken down by certified and classified staff. It is important to note, when Ms. Dudek ran these numbers for me, the certified staff, that number somewhat gets inflated a little bit because that's pulling anybody with a substitute teacher certification into that. So it doesn't truly reflect only our full-time teachers across the district. It's also adding those people back into that same report, but it's pretty close. This is a long report. There are very specific action steps that were drawn out in our CSIP plan to address culture, climate, and retention of staff across the district. I'm going to kind of just run through these quickly, but if you have questions, feel free to stop me, and we can address it as we go. First action step of this for Elevate One, utilizing multiple funding sources to provide teacher retention support. As a district, we do things all the time throughout the school year to help promote teacher retention, build climate. So we're obviously using district funds throughout the year to do that. Specific grant funds are used for this purpose, though, because over the last three years, we have had the teacher retention grant in the state of Missouri. That's actually phasing out going into this next school year, so we'll have to reevaluate how we provide some of these opportunities for staff. But as of 23-24, we utilize multiple sources. That plays right into the next action step, hosting first and second-year teacher events for all teaching and support staff to celebrate our openings across the different districts, staff appreciation, present awards. And I've just kind of bulleted out how we addressed all these during the academic year. So we did EdConnect events that were funded through teacher retention. We use those remaining funds expiring at the end of this year to actually draw out a new three-year contract to still be able to provide that at no cost to the district, which we'll have. Our back-to-school kickoff was held in August to introduce and celebrate new staff, and the Oscars event was held in the spring to award all staff across the district. And that was not only certified teaching staff, that was staff from every category of employment. Our partnerships with local universities are especially important to us because that's where we draw our teacher candidates from. I currently serve on the CMO Field Experience Advisory Committee, and we actively participate in the CMO EdHoc Scholar Program. So if you don't know what that is, there's your normal teaching, student teaching placement that comes in that's either fall semester or spring semester. EdHoc is for what CMO considers their cream of the crop, top teacher candidates coming out of that school year, and that's actually a year-long placement, which provides a much better opportunity to get them employed right away in our district. So we've accepted a number of those just over the last two years, but we've participated in it even longer than that. Continuous participation in a grow-your-own program or a Rising Educator High School program to create interest in the field of teaching was a priority also associated with that grant. Central High School operated the Rising Educators Club during this past school year. Ms. Taylor Bryant was actually the ELA Department Chair sponsored that club, and Mr. Russell was in charge of this last round of summer school, but we actually employ our Rising Educators as teacher assistants at our summer school session. Provision of professional development based on teacher input. Our district live professional development committee members are located at every building, gathering staff feedback. They use that feedback, and they work with our Academic Services Department to allocate resources for needed PD. It's very rare that we are not able to provide any opportunity requested of our staff as long as it closely associates with what they're doing for the district. Provision of new teacher training with each building or in combination with other buildings. So that was not in effect last year. We've restructured our new teacher training in the district, so now we'll be able to provide both. It's very important to principals that an element of their new teacher training happened in their buildings that they'll be working in. So effective for the 24-25 school year, this August, new teacher trainings will be held at both locations, so they'll get district and in-house training in their building. And then we obviously want to have competitive salaries, board-paid benefits, tuition support. Just to run through these quickly, previous year, MSTA ranked us as the fourth-highest starting teacher salary in all of the Southeast Region. That stretches as far as St. Jen, which we, or me, I don't really consider the Southeast Region, so it covers a big territory. As a district, we remain self-funded for employee health insurance, free to all benefit-eligible employees at no additional cost. That will not be adjusted for the next school year, so they don't have to compromise on what their benefits cover, and they don't have to contribute more to keep that same level of coverage. Fully-paid gym membership provided to all those same employees. We offer tuition reimbursement to eligible employees every five years for one class matching CMO's tuition rate, and we've actually enhanced that because we developed our aspiring leadership cohort, which gets triple that tuition reimbursement. And it's not listed on this because it didn't happen in this calendar year, but we'll also be announcing more exciting news about an exclusive educational partnership with CMO for the next five-year period moving forward. Surveying staff annually for feedback on culture and practices. The district, we're actually transitioning from what we used in kick-up before from our survey system into what DESI has provided as guidance through the next round for MSEP-6 guidelines. We've adopted a new program that effective this 24-25 school year, we'll be using for all that data collection. It's called JOT forms. Mr. Russell's been working on that actively. And then rounding sessions with our teachers, years two to four in the district. I'm going to skip over that. We have a full summary that Dr. Benyon will cover from that. But the last part was our perfect attendance drawings for certified and classified staff every term. In the collaboration effort with our Foundation Director, Local Businesses, perfect attendance was held every six weeks. And then additionally, our Foundation Director was able to donate two grand prize drawings at the June meeting that we saw, and both of those people were super excited about doing that, by the way. I got to see Julie later at Board and Brush, and she was just pumped to get her party set up, so. I'm going to turn the next portion over to Dr. Benyon for our rounding summary.
So, part of our, you didn't want to go over to the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm skipping ahead, I'm so excited about sharing what we learned at rounding. Total program evaluation, key metrics, obviously one, three, five-year retention rate for our teachers. Last year, when we established our CSIP plan, that was the baseline for data collection. Our teacher retention rate that year was 80.5%. That was coming off of a prior round when I started July 1, where we were hiring 82 new certified teachers across the district. So that's dramatically improved within that window, but that's not tracked. And then moving into the first year, this year, of actually tracking towards our target for retention, the rate for this exiting July is 82.7% certified teachers retained across the district. So we saw a 2.2 increase from the previous year. The target was three. We did miss that, but not by much. And then it gives you a program goal breakdown by year and what the next action steps will be. For the upcoming year, the target would be to hit 85% and increase retention by another 3.8. So right now, I'm rating our program performance as average. Any additional questions for me about that report? I know it's a lot of information, really quickly.
Is there like a state average on what the retention, teacher retention rate is?
There is. I don't know that number off the top of my head. I could look that up. It's really, sometimes it's apple to oranges type of comparisons because you're looking at regions, really, not so much the state, but it would be interesting to know what the state average is. I can tell you confidently, it's a lot lower than our number.
Okay, that's what I was hoping for.
It's because we have a university right here, local, and that's part of the reason why it's hard to get that number. Our rounding sessions were a big success this year. Rounding, just a little bit of background about what is rounding. Rounding sessions is a strategic, intentional method for determining what employees seek in their department leaders and their organization to enhance work conditions. Engagement in these consistent rounding sessions lead to the following. Good relationships with district leaders and staff establishes and understands that district leaders are approachable and sincere, demonstrates a willingness for leaders to work alongside staff to problem-solve, provides feedback, allocates resources when needed for organizational growth, and allows for planning, appropriate training, and professional development. Employees feel valued and cared for as an employee and a person. So one of the things that Dr. Beck and I did in March is we went to a training in regards to rounding sessions because it was such a success this year just with our one- and two-year teachers. We wanted to be able to expand that to all of our teachers and all of our staff. So next year, we're coming up with a plan. Part of that plan is using JOT form, but we're also including our administrators as well as part of this process. We will all be out in the buildings doing the process as well. We have five questions that we ask. The five questions are, what do you enjoy most about your job at Cape Public Schools? What motivates you to come to work and support our students? And what can we do to improve our culture across the district? And what opportunities for growth and development would you like to see offered across the district? And then how can we better recognize and reward your contributions to the school district? We got a lot of good information this year, even though we didn't get the participation that we really wanted to, but we got good information when we met with the different individual staff members. And we started some processes already, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what some of our findings are, the summary. The first is, what are we doing well in the district? Staff members feel well-supported by building administrative teams. Teachers feel highly-supported working within their grade-level content teams. Building a culture of belonging to school community. Provides resources for new teachers promptly when needed. And then make sure dedicated staff members work with new teachers across the school district and particularly the teacher support specialists. And that's the reason why we asked for you all to continue to fund that program, because I think it's a huge asset to our new teachers. What do we need to improve in the district? We need to improve processing times for professional development needs. Educating all staff on benefits available to them while working in the district. This was a biggie. We had conversations in multiple sessions about this. Even though we have an intake process for all of that, teachers that, their first year, they're a little overwhelmed, and they don't really know what they're enrolling in or what services that we actually provide for them for free. So that's something that we're looking at. That's part of the reason why we're also going out to bid for our TPA. So that was part of the process and the conversations because of customer service. We want to make sure that they're getting the customer service that they need for healthcare. Increase access to external administrators of the medical plan, and then increase incentives for continuing education, and that's what Dr. Beck had been working with CMO, so that we can offer a lower rate tuition fees, and we will give more information about that in the next month or so. Next is, what steps are we taking to address employees' concerns and/or requests? Some of these I've already answered. Restructuring our Academic Service Department to include two academic coordinators should improve responsiveness to PD requests moving forward. Mr. Russell has been working on that with his team. Develop a plan to educate all staff members on their district benefits, utilizing internal and external administrators to host face-to-face events. So we really need to get in front of our staff so that they know exactly what we offer as a district, because we offer a lot of resources for our staff. The 24-25 substitute teacher pay rates have been adjusted to offer increased compensation. Dr. Beck came up with a plan where we are, after their 20th day that they work in our district as a sub, their rate goes from 110 to 150, $150 a day, which hopefully we will continue to get more subs in our district. The district is currently exploring options for a new third-party administrator, and then the 24-25 teacher salary schedule has an added column to include doctoral degree, and then we're also doing something today, we're going to ask, request, something in a little bit, Ms. Dudek is, in regards to our teacher assistants as well, to help support them. And that is the report for our rounding session next year. Hopefully, it will be a little more comprehensive because we will be doing all staff, too. So we're looking forward to that.
That's great. Any other questions?
When you are getting this information from them, is it a conversation or they're getting on a thing and like typing out? Is that what, the JOT?
It's a face-to-face conversation.
It is a face-to-face.
We want a connection.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it needs to be a connection. And that's the whole concept of rounding. It's us being there, present, or some administrator being there, present, actually listening to concerns or things that we're doing well, things that we need to continue to do, things that we need to do differently.
Okay.
That's what rounding is. You have to be there face-to-face.
The JOT form is really for the principals to get...
They're entering.
Or just collecting the data.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
The increased access to external administrators of the medical plan for an area of improvement. Does that mean like out-of-network type?
No, no. This, a third-party administrator, administrators are self-insured, are self-insured insurance that we have currently.
So what are they, so...
So we want to be, the third-party administrators negotiate prices.
Okay.
They also make sure that we use our stop-loss when we need to. It's very, there's a lot of details that go along with that third-party administrator. They're basically the administrator for your health plan.
They're also our customer service.
Yeah.
Oh, so if they have a question about insurance, I think that's who they're calling.
Yeah. They basically administer our entire healthcare.
So it's not actual healthcare that they're trying to, it's better administration.
They don't offer the healthcare. They do negotiate, and then they work through EOBs and those type of things with staff.
Okay, thank you.
How to pay their bills.
Good questions?
That is good.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Up next, we have Academic Services Reports, and first, Testing Schedule/Assessment Program. Mr. Russell?
Yes, so we've got a slate of things here that are actually consent agenda items, and so we can discuss them here easily and there. It's a little bit harder to discuss them, so I wanted to do it here instead. So every year, we have a assessment program, which you guys should be able to see linked there, but if not, it's down here in the consent agenda. And if I put the glasses on, I can get a seat. All right. There it is. And so we have the district testing plan. Very little has changed from last year to this year. Still doing Galileo, ACT, AP exams, all of the testing that is included with special services is included in there. Really, the only thing to change, Mandy, was the...
For our screener, we used to use for our cognitive testing that we give in second grade and until any of your students learn through eighth grade. We used to use the OLSAT, and we went to the CAGAT just because it was an online version. We could get our scores quickly. We also used them as a screener for the gifted program. But within the gifted program, we still had to do yet another test so they could qualify semi. They could go before the committee if they scored a certain score on the CAGAT, and they still had to have another assessment to confirm that. The NAGLIERA is another test that we have used as that second confirmation that just came out with the general ability test that does verbal and nonverbal assessment and quantitative as well. And that can be used as a standalone. You don't need an additional assessment for, to qualify for the gifted program, so it just makes sense that we would move to that. It's also cheaper, by $3 and something a student, $3 and something cheaper, because the guy who created it just felt like it was such a good assessment that he wanted to make sure anybody could have access to it. So our committee looked at that, and I think that's going to be a good change for our students and for our staff.
Everything else was update, updated testing windows, so, but other than that, nothing's really changed with it. Let's see. The next thing is professional development, as we were just talking about with Dr. Beck. We have the ability for all of our staff to, we have people from every building come together, and they create within their groups their own plans, and you guys can see the plans here as well as the budgetary piece of that. One of the responses to the rounding sessions this year about being able to get professional development was we upped the budget for, I think about $15,000 this year, split amongst the buildings, and so that way, those buildings could make better decisions for their buildings with that. And so you guys can see all of those plans there. They've all been reviewed, vetted, and they've got some pretty good plans in there, very specific to... One of the other things that we did this year is we combined the building plan time along with the professional development plan instead of it coming at the beginning of the year. So all of their planning for next year is already, it's already been done together along with the budget, so they can kind of make all of those decisions at one time instead of multiple times through the year. And so, and then, lastly, we've got curriculum adoption. This year is social studies. You guys back in, I think April or May, already approved the textbook budgeting piece of that ahead of time. This is just the curriculum language as a part of it, and down in Consent Agenda, you have every single curriculum. There are K-8 social studies, and then every course that we have at the high school, including some of the modified courses, are a part of that, as well as AP, and those are there for you guys to check out. This year, the process was a little bit different. We, as a part of CSIP, we wanted to make sure that, and I think we did this in Board PD back in March or April as well, where we talked about alignment with, in connection with Missouri learning standards, and then vertical alignment, making sure that we hit all of those holes in the curriculum. And they were able to do that and did it way better than expected. Matter of fact, some of the, some of the grade levels in courses are already able to have everything prepared for the next school year assessment-wise. It's all aligned to, for social studies, it's all aligned to Portrait of a Graduate, and also our EL requirements. And some of them started sped, depending on how much time they had, and if they had a sped, person there with them to be able to make those determinations, but those were also all aligned. And so it's been a really good process. I'm really proud of the team and the teachers for jumping in and going with it because it was a whole lot more than usual, I'll put it that way, that they were able to do it. And so, so yeah, if you guys have any questions about any of those things, please feel free.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have the Treasurer Finance Report. Ms. Dudek.
So I'm going to present on the June fund balance report. So when we talked last month, this was projected, and this is, I won't say absolute final, but this is pretty close to final. I'm just going to focus on the general fund. So at the beginning of the month, on June 1st, we had a beginning balance of $22.9 million in our general fund. Revenues were $1.9 million, expenses $2.2, and our transfer was only $487,000 to the special revenue fund because the special revenue fund had more revenue in it to cover their expenses. So that leaves us with the ending fund balance in the general fund of $22 million. Percentage-wise, it's 37%, so it's better than what I presented last month. I presented a 35.6, so that's good news. And it's a combination of more revenues coming in and minus expenses being a little bit high when I do projections. So the cash and investment detail, that's total cash that the district has and the banks that it is invested in is listed below. Does anybody have any questions about this report? If you want to look at a year-to-date, like to see everything, this is just the month. There's another report that's attached, the year-to-date, and then the details, there's the detailed reports. You can see the details that make up this number. Also wanted to mention that we got our preliminary assessed valuation this month. It looks good. It came in at a 1% right now. It will be final in August. We'll get it at the beginning of August, and at the August 4th meeting, we'll have our tax rate hearing where you will approve the levy. And also, under Consent Agenda, we have a revised teacher assistant salary schedule for this year, and what we've done is we've just added a master's column. We just added an educational column for teacher assistance. We have about a handful of teacher assistants that have a master's degree, so we added a column for that. To be fully transparent, it was something that I should have added to the salary schedules when we went in May, and I just left it all accidentally. Does anyone have any questions for you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, up next, we have the Support Services Report. I believe Dr. Benyon.
Yes, Mr. Kraus not here tonight, but he wanted me to mention to all of you, and we've talked about it a little bit as well, that our Red Star facility is not going to be ready in time for the start of the school year. The reason behind that is because there is an electrical panel that we've been waiting on for over a year. We still haven't gotten that electrical panel. It's a specially-built electrical panel, and at this time, we have not received it yet. It takes three weeks to install, and then they have to test the electrical panel, so we would not have it installed in time for the school year to start. So we have a couple of backup plans for our transition for Red Star and then ECSE to Central Academy. So Central Academy will be transitioning over to Red Star October 17th and 18th, and then we're looking at ECSE moving to Central Academy here in this, this building over semester break, over Christmas break as well. We will be giving you more details later.
Sorry, the 17th and 18th, does that line up with when the fall break is? Is that why it's that date?
No. 17th is professional development. Well, the 17th is professional development. Well, the 17th is professional development, and the 18th is the break.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's both. But they have professional development on the 17th.
I see.
Central Academy also grades differently. Their grading cycle is differently.
Oh, okay.
So, every other school issues grades by semester, and they issue per term.
Got it.
So, that also aligns with the end of term.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have our board reports, and first up is MSBA delegate report. Dr. Fegley.
I do have notes, all very big ones, but. As you stated earlier, I was at the.
Summer Summit?
Summer Summit in June, and attended a lot of great sessions. But the one thing that I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of, you know that we adopt our advocacy positions in the fall conference. If you want to take a look at that, go to the MSBA website and look at what the advocacy positions are. Those positions will be finalized in the meeting in October, but if you have ideas about revisions, or a proposal, or something, and you want to submit that, the deadline for submitting those is 5:00 on August 16th, so that's a Friday. So, be sure, that's going to happen before we have our next board meeting, so be sure you take a look at those advocacy positions, and if you want to suggest changes or propose new ideas, you need to make sure that you get that stuff in there by August 16th. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. And legislative report, Ms. Flinchi.
Not a lot to report, we are not in session right now, but as I'm sure you all know, primaries are coming up, and I can say at my house, in just the past weekend, I had three door knockers at my door to just talk about who's running, whatever, and so I would just encourage, if you've got somebody at your door, ask them about their public school policies, and make sure you're voting for somebody that is going to heartily support our awesome public schools. The end.
I like it.
That's great.
All right, up next, we have our Cape Public School Foundation. I know Ms. McDonald's not here tonight, but do you have anything for us?
I haven't gotten any updates. We didn't have any last month. It's a little slow in the summer, so.
That is all good. All right, up next, we have a non-action items, our first reading of a few board policies We have, first up, policy BDC, which is, I'm not going to read all of them, I'll just give you the titles, this is sent out previously, regarding closed meetings, records, and votes. Policy FFA, memorials on facilities and grounds. Policy IND, ceremonies and observances. Policy JEC-A-2, eligibility to enroll. Policy KG, community use of district facilities, which has been updated. Policy DFI-2, setting tuition for district programs. Policy GBEBC, criminal background checks. Policy JEC-1, school admissions. Policy JO-1, student records. And policy KH, public gifts to the schools. And I'm going to say that five times fast once again. First reading and only reading. And we'll be voting on those in our next board meeting. All right, up next, we have the approval of consent agenda items. We have many items here, again, that's sent out previously for your review. I'll just read the titles. Minutes from June 24, 2024, regular and special meetings. And May 20th, 2024, special meeting, payment of bills, approval of new social studies, curriculum adoption, and ELA curriculum updates. Professional development plan for 2024, 2025. Testing and assessment schedule for 24, 25. Approval of addition of educational column, exceeding bachelor's degree for teacher's assistance. Mr. Jamie Russell as coordinator of the assessment testing program. Mr. Brian Payne as Title IX coordinator. Ms. Mandy Keys as Section 504 and ADA coordinator, also as liaison for homeless children and youth, and liaison for migrant, ELL, immigrant, and refugee children and youth, as well as for Ms. Keys, educational liaison for children in foster care. Then we have Mr. Chris Jock as district's AHERA-designated person. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Dr. Fegley?
Second.
Ms. Langston, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Up next, we have our business. Can I get a mo, well, I'll go one at a time. Do we approve these now? No. Up next, we have our business, one at a time here. First up is reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave days upon retirement. So, the recommendation, if I can get a motion, is to approve a sliding scale daily reimbursement rate for accumulated sick, sick leave days remaining upon retirement, based on the amount of notice given. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Langston, Dr. Fegley? Discussion.
So, the sliding scale before you is actually just a reapproval of the annual sliding scale. The actual changes for payout based on notice given was adjusted the previous school year. It is our recommendation to keep this sliding scale, the largest payout sum of $50 per day that's given in November for teaching staff, or do six months, six months' notice. We would want to keep that at that limitation, because the amount of payout that we pay as any sort of retirement incentive is always measured by PSRS and peers, and if our average payout exceeds $7,000 per employee, we actually lose the ability to offer a critical shortage as an employment option in the district. We're actually at the max capacity at 50 at our 140 days already, so it's our recommendation to keep that payout the same.
Any questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Up next, we have reimbursement rate for unused emergency leave in excess of maximum. So, if I can get a motion to the tune of approving the reimbursement rate for unused sick leave days in excess of the maximum accumulation of $25 per unused sick leave day.
So moved.
Dr. Fegley?
Second.
And Ms. Langston, thank you. Discussion.
Once again, just like the one we just discussed, this is an annual approval that takes place that directly ties into GCBDA and GDBDA for exceeding the max of unused days in the district. So, if you banked 140 days, you're maxed out, and rather than having a later payout, we pay by pay period for that, because you're in excess, we are recommending the daily rate remain at $25 a day for that as well.
How many people do we have that are currently have 140 sick days and are taking advantage of that payout per pay period? Do you know?
I do not know an exact number. I know.
Just like a handful, a dozen, two dozen, a hundred?
Quite a few.
Okay, that's great.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we have approval, a contractual agreement with Kenny Rogers Center. Looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with the Kenny Rogers Children's Center for Physical Therapy and Occupational Therapy Services for the 2020, 2024, 2025 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Flinchi?
Second.
Dr. Fegley, thank you. Discussion.
The best reviews for the past several years, they provide great quality service. We have a lot of students that need therapy assistance, and they always meet and want for us. They do a really good job of determining the difference between school-related therapy and medical therapy, and they charge us in accordance with the Medicaid eligible rate, which we also get reimbursed for them. So, while we pay it out front, we get reimbursed in the back, when we bill Medicaid, for Medicaid-eligible students. Not every student that receives therapy is Medicaid-eligible, but for the most common. Any questions?
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we have approval of contractual agreement with a new outlook for visually-impaired and orientation and mobility services. Looking for a recommendation to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with a new Outlook LLC for orientation and mobility and vision services for the 2024, 2025 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Flinchi, Dr. Fegley? Discussion.
This is Erin Brewer, who provides these services for us. She is a teacher of the visually impaired, as well as a certified orientation mobility specialist. She is awesome. She contracts with a lot of local districts and districts further away. You will see her social media platform. She constantly has our kids in surrounding communities with vision impairments out doing things that they would probably never do if it weren't for her. So, she's phenomenal. Her rate is commensurate to other services that provide, or other businesses that provide the same services. It did go up, I believe it was $10, but that is, like I said, equal to anybody else that would come to this area. I'm the only other certified person named Kate, and I cannot do that without this job. Very appreciative of her.
That's a pretty good argument.
[laughter]
Any other questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, another approval of contractual agreement with Krista Weber to provide hearing-impaired services. Recommendation here is to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with Krista M. Weber for services to students who are deaf or hard of hearing for the 2024, 25 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Fegley, Ms. Flinchi? Discussion.
Good job. We get an award tonight. Krista actually runs the Discovery Playhouse. You can go there very often. She used to work for another district, but she has her certificate to teach in that area. She helped us out last year. She works there full-time, but she's off there on Mondays, and she's able to actually cover all of our students on Mondays, or work in different schedules. So, she's been a blessing. Again, her rates are similar to other people who offer the same services, and her stay go up $10 for each thing, except for assessments as well, which is reasonable, considering what she does.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Up next, we have approval of contractual agreement with Craig Home Care, a PHS company. Looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement on behalf of the board with Craig Home Care, a PHS company, CHC, for the 2024, 25 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Fegley, Ms. Flinchi? Discussion.
Okay, we have a student that requires a one-on-one nurse, and this is the company that we are working with for that nurse. They've done an excellent job for us, they worked for us last year as well, and we intend to continue to provide quality services. We also are able to bill Medicaid for these services, so the rate did increase slightly, but it increased with Medicaid rates.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, approval of board policies, GDBDA, which is regarding support staff leaves. Policy JGR1, incorporating JGR2 for student discipline. Regulation JG-R3, adding that in for the Terry W. Kitchen student discipline. And rescinding regulation JG-R2 for student discipline. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Fegley, Ms. Langston? And discussion?
So, there's several policies and regulation adjustments, obviously, listed. Policy GDBDA, support staff leave, that pertains specifically to the new leave category that Dr. Benyon and yourselves discussed, and you approved. It was support staff school-closing leave, so that's our non-12-month classified employees that we don't want to punish in the event that we have to close school, and they're all relying on that hourly pay coming in. So, we added school-closing days for Dr. Benyon to use at his discretion in the event that school's canceled. Those people can still use that as paid leave, and we're not gifting those individuals, because it's embedded with our policy. As with many things, when you put some two, you know, new leave category in, we found language that we needed to add to the policy that made it more specific, as what is defined and determines school closing, what other leave type it could be used with, things like that. So, this policy revision is actually just adding that additional language to that category. As for JG, regarding student discipline, a portion of that is MSBA's recommended language changes occurring, which we typically always follow their guidance. And then, another piece of that is the Terry W. Kitchen adopting yonder pouches, as well as CHS for the following year, so we had to adjust policy regulation to include them, and the increased rate for pouch replacement, which went from $25 to $30 per pouch. And then, the last piece is actually the rescension of JGR2. We used to maintain two regulations, one for student participation in extracurriculars, non-athletic, one was for athletics. We've able to mesh the language to only have to maintain one, so we're actually eliminating one of the regulations. Any questions or concerns?
Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. That's the end of business. All right, lastly, we have information and proposals from board members. Do we have anything this evening? Well, if not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Langston, Dr. Fegley, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.